Hello, ladies and gentlemen, it's notice. Thank you all for being here this evening. This town hall is held by the Committee on Education, Libraries, and Public Broadcasting. It's officially called to order at the home of the Gecko's, George Washington High School. Today's date is Thursday, April tenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the time is six eleven. My name is Senator Vince Borja, Chairperson of the Committee, joining me today from the legislature, my colleagues Senator Shelly Calvo and Senator Chris Barnett. Additionally, we are joined by the GDOE team Senator, uh, Senator, Superintendent Swanson, Deputy Superintendent Joe Sanchez, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Adamas, Mr. Paul Wade. We have our Board Chairman, Mr. Angel Soblon, GFT Representative, President Tim Fadenko. We'd also like to begin by thanking the George Washington High School community, including Principal Dexter Folo and Vice Principals Jonice, Sarosola, Nashita Mandel, Eric Dela Cruz, and Christopher Castro for hosting us this evening. We'd also like to take this time to recognize and thank the mayor's staff for the tables and chairs that we have this evening, and also thank the hardworking support staff from the Committee on Education, the Legislature's AV Team, and central staff for all they do for our community. Traditionally, we go over a list of rules of conduct, but tonight, we'll trust that we all understand we're here for one reason: our children. We ask that we remain respectful and collaborative. I can't do this alone. I need every one of you to work with me, share ideas, and help us find real solution. This townhouse is intentional. While we've listened to many oversight hearings, we find that sometimes that's less productive. Too often, we get the blame game without accountability or action, and tonight, we want to try and do things differently. After I turn the mic over to the Board Chairman, the Superintendent for his teams' introductions and brief remarks, we'll move into a short presentation from GDOE, and then we'll open the floor to you, our students, teachers, and parents. We've outlined a few key topics that we'd like to focus on tonight, being discussed by GDOE, which is the strategies for timely school openings, which will review current protocols and identify needed improvements to ensure schools open on time; maintaining a safe learning environment, where we'll examine safety measures in place, and discuss facility maintenance concerns; impact on graduation rates, where we'll explore initiatives aimed at providing graduation outcomes across our schools; strategic goals and updates, where we'll review the strategic goals of our educational system and share relevant updates. If you have any other topics or concerns, please feel free to share them after GDOE concludes their presentation. I only ask that we be mindful of time, especially since we still have school tomorrow. And now I'll pass them, uh, have the Board Chairman do give his opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to all of you. Thank you for being here and to hear things about our Guam Department of Education. I do see another board member that's here, so I'd like to call him up and have him sit right here. Mr. Ada, you are a board member. Come on up and join us. But anyways, I just thank you, Senator, for, and members of the committee and those senators that are here, for giving us the opportunity, giving the Superintendent the opportunity and his staff to be able to relay to all of you the status of where we're at and how we're doing and where we're going. I just want to assure you that even though it's been a rocky last few weeks, we are getting things stabilized, and I want you to know that unless something else happens, this chairman still has full confidence in our superintendent, and I want you to know that. He has been working religiously hard along with his staff to try and give out the right information, the correct information, as far as funding for our federal funds, funding through ARPA, funding through our local funds. In fact, the Superintendent and I just came from a meeting with the governor, because tomorrow morning at seven, we are having a teleconference with the newly appointed U.S. Ed. Secretary, Ms. McMahan, and we're going to fight hard to make sure that the commitments they made prior to her coming on board in making sure that the funds for GDOE, which they committed until March of two thousand twenty-six, will be honored. We were given a drop-dead deadline just two weeks ago that says if you don't submit all your stuff by March twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-five, then your ARPA funding is lost, and that's where all the confusion comes in. Yes, that was the mandate from U.S. Ed., but there is also a caveat, which says if you come back to us on an individual basis and tell us what grant is it that you have, what project is it that you have, how much is in that project, how much you're going to expend, how much more time do you need to complete it, then we will look at your request for reimbursement on a case-by-case basis. So at least there is hope. And the Superintendent and the Deputy Superintendents that are here tonight are working very, very hard to make sure that whatever information we can give, so that those commitments they made to continue till March of two thousand twenty-six are honored, and we will fight to the very end to make sure that Guam gets the money and the commitment that they have been told they can get, and I believe we will. So, Mr. Chair, I just want you to know that we at the Board of Education, the Guam Education Board, and the Superintendent and the deputies are all working closely together to make sure that we go upwards, not downwards, forward, not backwards, and that's my commitment to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Soblon, and now Dr. Swanson for his opening remarks.
The joy of many, my remarks will be brief. We want to get into the meat of our meeting this evening. I'm really happy to see that we have so many members of our community here, and the thought process that the Senator presented to me a few months ago, and as he took office, is let's get our oversight and committee and system meetings out in the community where people are. So I'm hoping that we have a different group of people every time we meet like this, because we have more exposure to the community and make the resources of our system readily available to folks on a local basis. We're going to be discussing some important pieces to comment on the opening remarks from my Board Chair. The thing that is important to remember is that, as you can see, this campus is under renovation to a degree, and as are eleven others, and we are committed to getting that work completed, and part of the conversation that we'll have with the Department of Education tomorrow is reallocating and reassuring us that the funds that were already committed when we set up these contracts, in fact, are going to be delivered to us so that we can finish the work and have all of the upgrades done on all the campuses that are affected. But with that, I will close my remarks and say thank you all for coming. As questions come up during the evening, please feel free to ask whichever of my team you think might have an answer for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Swanson, and since he kept this short, we'll have, you know, we only have two senators here tonight, but we'll give them a couple minutes to share some remarks.
Good evening, have a day, buenas, everyone. First, I want to thank, my name is Senator Shelly Calvo, Oversight for Children, Youth, Women, Disability Services, the Arts, Culture Preservation HRA. I'm also part of the Education Board with our Chair, Senator Vince Borja. I am here to basically listen to your concerns and take in everything that is, the challenges that you guys are, we're all facing at the moment. That way, collectively, collaboratively, we can work with all the issues. We've been working, we've been working towards solving the issues and challenges that we have in our community, especially in terms of education, and I'm working closely with our committee here. So tonight, I'm all ears, and please, we encourage you to speak up. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here again.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Senator Barnett.
Sidoos massi, Mr. Chair, and it's great to be back here at the GW Cafeteria. I actually served some students' luncheon here back when I was in high school, but I didn't do it, I was absolutely framed. But thank you, Principal Dex, and your staff for having us. It's good to see the refurbishment and renovation at work that's ongoing, but, you know, I think a lot of people have a great deal of uncertainty and anxiety about the state of these refurbishments and repairs and the status of the ARP funds. As the Chair of the Board had said, there was a very sudden announcement from the Secretary of U.S. DOE that basically said, if you didn't spend this money by today, then you lose it. And that announcement came a month after they had said that in order to access these ARP funds, you had to spend local monies first, so it's been a little bit of topsy-turvy. And of course, that compounded with the news of the loss of twenty-seven million dollars in federal funds, but I know that the Chair is looking at examining those issues very closely at the upcoming oversight hearing, so I'm just here to listen to as well from the stakeholders of the George Washington and the public school community. So sidoos massi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. And so now we'll turn the microphone over to GDOE for their presentation as a courtesy. Please state your name and title for the record before going over your main topics. Thank you.
Good evening, Senator Borja and Committee. The area that I'm going to address would be the strategies for timely school openings, and it actually just coincides with the principal's meeting that we had yesterday, and we went over the SOP seventeen hundred dash zero zero six, which focuses on school readiness. So even though we are preparing to end this school year, there's already the preparation for next school year, and so being guided by this document, when we look at the two aspects, there's reporting, and then there's coordinating instruction. Under reporting, starting in June, the first week of June, our principals will be turning in a weekly report that's called the School Readiness Report, and in this process, one of the areas that we're looking at is personnel vacancies. Another area is the master schedule, and with the guidance that I provided with our principals, as they are preparing their draft master schedules for school year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, they are to maximize ensuring that the courses that are being offered, number one, is based on student need, and that the teachers that they have on board are teaching full loads to ensure that we have a least likelihood of vacancies in that, you know, we don't want a teacher to have less enrollment. We want our teachers to maximize. We also, in this report, we're looking at deep cleaning of our classrooms, so this not only involves the cleaning team, but it involves the staff that will be taking care of pulling out all the furniture in the classrooms and doing that deep cleaning that's taking place twice a year. We also have an area in the reporting process where we're looking at critical maintenance areas, and so in this process, there's a lot of collaboration with HR, there's ongoing communication with our facilities and maintenance team, which ties in with Deputy Leabeth, who's new in our management team, and definitely with Deputy Wade, who oversees finance. So a lot of collaboration, and then we have our facilities and maintenance administrator and their supervisors and teams who already target which schools need more areas of assistance to get the school readies, because in the process of all of this, we are still following our schedule of schools that need to be inspected by Department of Public Health and Social Services. So a lot of collaboration, a lot of reporting, a lot of monitoring to ensure that our schools are ready come August first, when it's our teacher's workday. And then at the school level, we also have our need to fill the vacancies, so we have our job fair tentatively scheduled for Friday, June twentieth, at Liguan Elementary, and we'll get the logistics out there in terms of what time are we looking at, and that will help to ensure that we reach out to our community, have those interviews, and try to fill the vacancies as quickly as we can. And that's what I have to present. I'll take any questions if anyone should have.
Thank you, Dr. Adamas. I do want to make sure that we add, because this has been, the last two years, been the question in people's mind, are the schools inspected and are they going to open on time? And the answer to that is yes, they are. All of our schools have public health certificates. We have already completed the reinspection for renewal well into October, so we are not going to be faced with issues around the public health permits, so you can count on school opening on time. The only thing that might change that is the weather that can come our way, and we all know that we learned how to cope with that, but in, under normal circumstances, you can see schools start at the beginning of August on time, and that's one of the things that I'm very proud of our folks in being able to achieve. It's taken a lot of community effort to get us to that point. We have a lot of work to do still to make our schools better, but the safety standards that need to be met and sanitation standards that need to be met are taken care of.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Sanchez. I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum and Instructional Improvement. For the first part of this presentation, I'd like to call Dr. Zenny Natibidat. She is the Administrator for Research, Planning, and Evaluation, and she will share some insights into our student achievement data and graduation rates.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Zenny Natibidat. I am the Administrator for Research, Planning, and Evaluation, and I take care of the data for the department, specifically district-level data. And what you have in your hands are some of the key indicators that we use for our state strategic plan, the monitoring of our state strategic plan, and during this meeting, there's a question of the graduation rate. So the first slide that I have here is the graduation rate in the last school year, which is SY twenty-three, twenty-four, which was calculated, which I calculated at ninety-one point three percent compared with the prior year, SY twenty-two, twenty-three, which was ninety point seven percent. So the graduation rate increased. Now, I have to inform you that the graduation rate is a cohort graduation rate, meaning I follow the ninth graders, if you're a graduate this year, I track you from four years ago, when you were ninth grader, and then follow you the next school year, when the student is in the tenth grade, and then follow you again, those students, that cohort of students, when they are in their junior year, and finally, the same cohort of students in, when they are in twelfth grade. So I included in my presentation here the complicated formula for determining the graduation rate. It's not an easy, it's not an easy calculation. So considering all of those, we have consistently been increasing our graduation rate through the years, and I will be excited to compute that for this next school year. And part, part of what I look at every year is the number of students that drop out when they were in ninth grade for the same cohort, the number of students that drop out when they are in tenth grade, and in eleventh grade, and in twelfth grade. So that becomes, that composes part of the denominator in the graduation rate, and very proud to announce that our graduation rate last year, cohort graduation rate, is ninety-one point three percent. There's another way to calculate the graduation rate, which is simple annual graduation rate, which is the numerator is the number of graduates divided by the number of students in twelfth grade, but that doesn't tell us a lot, because the cohort graduation rate allows us to look back four years ago of how many of these initially, initial group of ninth graders came to finish when they're twelfth graders. And on the second page, I would like to share data comparing two school years, SY twenty-two to twenty-three, and twenty-three and twenty-four. We'd like to share some indicators of what went up and what went down. So I've already mentioned that graduation rate went up from ninety point seven percent to ninety-one point three percent. Then we have interim AIMS Web Assessment. This is given or administered to the students during the school year in order for teachers to determine what skills or are lacking amongst our students, or what they are capable of doing. So we found out for the school year twenty-three to twenty-four that the AIMS Web results from the fall semester, which is the first time they take it, increased at the end of the school year, which tells us that they learned something, right? Fall to spring went up, they learned something throughout the year. The other good indicator that we have, which is used in our state strategic plan, are the Work Keys. Work Keys assessments are for those, for the students, for us to determine whether or not they are, they are at certain levels in preparation for their ability to be able to join the workforce, and I'm very happy to say that platinum levels among our students that took the Work Keys assessment for the past two years increased from four point two percent to five point six percent. In other words, our students are getting better. They are achieving higher levels in the Work Keys assessment. Finally, in the what went up category, is our year-end of school survey, which we call the Annual YES Survey. It is a series of forty-five questions about school experiences of students, parents, teachers, school staff, and including the school administrators. Last year, our completed clean survey consisted of sixteen thousand two hundred thirty-three completed survey from all stakeholders. I make available results by this aggregated stakeholder category, which is what did the parents say about school safety for that particular school year, in this case SY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four? What about the parent, what about the teachers? What do they think about school safety? What about the students? What about the school staff? What about the school administrators? So we have a series of such indicators, and every stakeholder category responds to that, total of sixteen thousand two hundred thirty-three responses. What went down for the last two years, not including this year, of course, we're not done with this school year. Student enrollment was less by one thousand three hundred twenty-six students. Number of employees, we are less by two hundred sixty-one employees. Total revenues, less by twelve million five hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred. Our total expenditures, less by six million two hundred, two thousand nine hundred sixty-eight. Results, some key results of the YES Survey. Overall satisfaction with GDOE leadership stood firm at fifty-seven percent. Our goal is seventy percent. This year is the important year. This is the third year of our state strategic plan. According to our state strategic plan, we should reach this target of seventy percent or seventy-five percent by year three. I'm very happy to announce that according to all the stakeholders of sixteen thousand two hundred thirty-three, the school administrators reached seventy-two percent. That is above our target of seventy percent. In other words, the satisfaction level with our school administrators, that means the school principals and assistant principals were perceived to do a very good job, and seventy-two percent out of sixteen thousand two hundred thirty-three agreed or strongly agreed with that particular statement. Let's look at what parents say. Parents agree that their school is safe. Seventy-nine percent of all the parents, about six thousand of them, indicated that they agree or strongly agree with that particular statement. Our target, seventy-five percent. That means we exceeded our goal. Another very good indicator, parents agree that their school facilities are clean and in good condition. Seventy percent said so, agreed or strongly agreed to that statement, and our target is seventy percent. Finally, parents agree that their school is supportive of learning. Eighty-one percent. Our target, seventy-five percent. We exceeded our goal already, from the point of view of parents. Next page are actually for the instruction of our guests here and our senators. I provided a three-year result of the YES Survey, which we have in school year two thousand twenty-two, school year two thousand twenty-three, and school year two thousand twenty-four. Notice the trend, the increasing trend of increasing percentages of respondents. Notice the trend, the increasing trend of increasing percentages of respondents from all four categories that agree or strongly agree with the work that we are doing. We, can I make an advertisement? We are actually, we just launched the SY twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five year-end of school survey. All parents are getting copies, hard copies of the YES Survey. All students from grades three to twelve. All teachers, all school staff, and all school administrators are supposed to, are encouraged to complete the online version of the YES Survey. Watch for it by July. Finally, if I may, just share the last one here, the fourteen points assessment. I'm sure this is of interest to our legislature, because this is the law on Adequate Education Act. I wanted to share this because there are two points here. One is the number of schools that actually passed that category. For example, number of certified teachers, certified administrators, certified guidance counselor, certified school health counselor, certified allied health professionals, properly ventilated classroom, potable water, reliable supply of electricity, sanitation, flushable toilets, sanitation, clean restroom, sanitation, dining area, sanitation classrooms. And then, adopted textbooks for each student. Libraries meet AASL standards. Learning environment. My copy is very small. Sorry. Learning environment building is rated B or better. One hundred eighty instructional days. And the last point is regular and timely school bus transportation. Please note, the percentages of our schools that met these targets, they're very high. All our administrators are certified. Forty-one out of forty-one schools have certified administrators. We have certified guidance counselor ninety-one, ninety-five point one. We have certified school health counselors, ninety point one. Our low, you can see here, properly ventilated classrooms. But we are currently addressing it. All the air cons are being taken care of as we speak. Potable water, reliable water supply, electricity, ninety point two percent. Sanitation, flushable toilets, hundred percent. I want to point out that when we counted the actual number of toilets, they far exceeded the ratio, the standard required by public health. These numbers show that we are taking care of more toilets than is required by public health. No wonder some of them may not be. But it says here, three hundred forty-nine point six percent. We are way over the number of toilets that is required based on the ratio of one per seventy-five students, or one, one per, one toilet for every sixty students in elementary school, and in secondary school, one toilet for every one hundred. We far exceeded that. All the other indicators here show very high ratings of the number of schools that met those targets. Point twelve is the only other low, low item that we have here, twenty-four point four percent. At that time, and the data that I collected for this fourteen points assessment is prior to school opening. But throughout the year, of course, the sanitation inspections were happening, and some schools already passed. At that time, only ten out of forty-one passed the sanitary inspection. But I'm sure in my report this coming year, that's going to be forty-one out of forty-one based on the report by Dr. Swanson that all of our schools passed the sanitary inspection. I have a lot of data, and they're all available on the website. It is called Annual ASPR, Annual State of Public Education Report. There are so many important indicators that are there, but these are the key ones that we track so that we know where we are at with our state strategic plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Zenni. I'm glad that you mentioned the website, because we apologize that we didn't have a PowerPoint presentation. But please, if you go on the website, you'll see that report that she's actually referencing. Again, my name is Joe Sanchez. I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum and Instructional Improvement. And I've just put a timer for myself, so I'm going to be conscious of how long I present. Pretty happy to see a lot of teachers and administrators here. These are the folks that I work a lot of times directly with, you know, with regards to teaching and learning, and what the students do in the classrooms, and, you know, helping out with instructional strategies and so forth. So, I want to kind of acknowledge them. I know that a lot of what I'm going to say tonight, they've heard many times, and they're really actively implementing this at their schools. I'm not going to share with you all the strategies that are aligned to our strategic plan. I'm going to kind of highlight four of the main ones just so that you get an idea of what's expected in every classroom in every school. This was part of our, what we called the ten-point plan to support accelerated learning. That was our approach right after COVID. So, if you know, as you know, when COVID hit, and we weren't able to go back to school, and we were inconsistent with regards to, you know, face-to-face instruction, it really did hurt a lot of our students with regards to student achievement. What was most troubling is that the students who were most hardest, that were hardest hit, were the ones who were already struggling. Based on the data that we have, you know, in terms of the high-performing, proficient, and advanced students, it was almost like they didn't skip a beat. Like, they went right back to, you know, being proficient and being high-performing. But for those students who were right on the cusp of becoming proficient or at the lower levels, actually increased. So, you know, that was a concern for us, that we needed to provide more strategies and more supports to the students who were struggling already, and then, of course, when they came back. So, each one of the strategies that I'm sharing with you and describing to you are research-proven. These are things that have been, you know, looked into by universities and, you know, school districts, and really have shown to have a very high likelihood of supporting student achievement beyond just regular, you know, day-to-day instruction. The first one is teachers work together to identify what are called priority standards, skills, and topics. So, if you ever wonder, what do these kids learn in school? All the way from kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade, the teachers are heavily involved in making those decisions. They collaborate at the school level. They work together at the district level on a regular basis. So, we pull them together like twice during the school year to update the standards for the following school year. Every teacher who's involved in a particular class has the responsibility of kind of talking about, you know, what's up to date, you know, what's most important, what are the critical knowledges, knowledge and pieces of skills that they need to learn. And then, they kind of come up with those priority standards. And again, this is something that was done throughout the country, where they realize that you just don't have time to teach every single skill that you want. You don't have time to teach every piece of content that you like in a particular course. You know, and you end up with a curriculum that's a mile wide and an inch deep. So, with teachers, you ask them to really think through their standards, take a look at what the assessments require, take a look at what skills are necessary to support other subject areas, and then they come up again with those standards and skills for the following school year. Another piece that's strongly research-proven is what's called formative assessment. Now, one of the points that I want to make is the difference between what is assessment and testing. Because a lot of times, we use those terms interchangeably, where we think of, okay, we're assessing more, that we're just testing more. And that's not exactly what is happening. What we ask teachers to do, and we train them to do this, right? Is pick a look at where the students are, provide them with opportunities to demonstrate the skills that they have, whether it be through a test, that's one tool. But a lot of times, it's through projects, a lot of times, it's through presentations. Sometimes, it's short answers, sometimes, it's worksheets. But, you know, traditional assignments or other ways that they could show and demonstrate, you know, what they've learned. And they use that information. Teachers are asked to use that information to adjust their instructional strategies. So, if they see that a large percentage of students are not learning or are not doing well, the intent is to not just look at the data and go, oh, well, they're not doing well. Is you really want to go back and try different strategies that you could utilize to help a larger percentage of students in your classroom succeed and do well. The third part to that is we provide a lot of training with regards to effective instructional strategies. It's, you know, basically, how do you keep students engaged? How do you make sure that you're able to explain something to students who may be English learners, or who may not have the background, or who may not be interested in the subject? I mean, we run into situations like that, where a student might not be interested in a particular subject, but still have to take the class. Well, you know, we ask teachers to try to find ways that you could get these students interested, because that's one of the things that we know will tap with regards to, with regards to achievement, is the students actually are engaged in the classroom. And then, lastly, we work with the teachers a lot regarding student data, right? So, it's not just, you know, the test scores and grades and whatnot, but we really want to make sure that we're able to monitor student achievement, like I mentioned, utilize different strategies, and report those, that information out, right? And we do that kind of on a regular basis. And when we do that on a regular basis, it helps us to make sure that if a student is about to fail, or if a student is not going to do well in a particular class, or they need particular assistance, we can actually intervene, and we can actually assist. And I believe that that's one of the things that has really helped with our graduation rate, is teachers are, you know, there with the understanding that, look, our goal is to get these kids to understand the material. Our goal is to get them to actually develop the skills. It's not necessarily for them to fail. Doesn't mean that we're lowering the standard. We really try to keep the standard there, but the idea is to provide them those additional supports. I just want to talk about three models or three kind of areas that we really emphasized this particular school year. So, based on those things that we implemented about two, three years ago, right when we came back from COVID, we asked teachers, we asked administrators, what are the areas that seem to be the most effective that stood out from all of those strategies that you implemented? The first one, again, was those professional learning communities with, as I mentioned earlier, a particular focus on student data analysis and the interventions, actually using the information that you get from student assessment so that you can actually change your instructional strategies. The second one was literacy across the curriculum with a special emphasis of, on the science of reading. So, the science of reading is kind of really out there throughout the country, and there's a whole emphasis on ensuring that you implement literacy strategies in all content areas, because as we know, or if you don't know, the idea of literacy is important for every single subject. So, whether it be a math class, and you're trying to discuss, whether it be a science class, you know, it's just going to be important throughout the entire, your educational experience. So, teachers are trained to support literacy strategy in the classroom. And then, the last one is, again, going back to the idea of standards-based instruction, is looking at what the expectation is for every class from the beginning all the way to the end of when the student gets that final grade. Is every teacher works together in their PLCs, trying to clarify, okay, what is it that I'm trying to get these students to learn in this particular class? So, that way, we know they take biology at JFK, they take biology at Sanchez, they take biology at UKDU. We know that they're getting the same curriculum. Doesn't mean the teachers are teaching exactly the same way, but it does mean that we're consistent throughout the district, and we're able to monitor that progress. And I just want to close out with our big initiative throughout the district for career and technical education support. We just finished, earlier this year, about a month or two ago, our Career and Technical Education Conference, where we brought a number of teachers, there was about over two hundred participants, that really looked with the business community and discussed, what does the economy on Guam and the region look like in the next ten, ten, fifteen, twenty years, right? I mean, what can we do to help prepare them for this new economy that they're moving into? Some of you might be familiar with the term career and technical education from its old name, vocational education, right? It's a focus on jobs, focus on careers. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure we had people understand is it does not mean that it's not supporting college readiness. Career and technical education supports all varieties of job interests, whether it be a job that requires a four-year degree, whether you're going to go into accounting, whether you're going to go into engineering, whether you're going to go into medicine or biology, or if it's something that requires just post-secondary education, whether it be certification in construction, certification in allied health. So, really, the idea is helping students develop and understand what they are interested in and what they might want to work in when they get older. And then, from there, the curriculum is progressively supportive of that effort. And lastly, with regards to career and job readiness, and this was resounding with the business community and everybody who participated, is the need to infuse what is called soft skills into the curriculum. And we don't like the term soft skills, but that's, you know, for lack of a better term, we're going to figure out what that is. But those are basically job readiness skills that are the intangible, that are not necessarily academic. For example, attendance and punctu, not attendance and punctuation, attendance and punctuality, right? You know, work ethic, being able to communicate, being able to collaborate with your colleagues, being able to problem solve, being able to think at higher levels when you're trying to analyze a particular situation. These are all things that the business community has told us that, yeah, we still need them to read, we still need them to write, we still need them to speak and listen. But is there a way that you could infuse some of these skills? Because we really do want them to be able to have these skills when they come into our jobs, whether it be, you know, working in a restaurant as a waiter, or even, you know, working as an engineer in an engineering firm. I mean, these skills are going to be needed throughout all of the different types of jobs that they have. So, you know, again, I tried to summarize all the great things that our teachers and administrators are doing in our schools. But the one data point that we're really concerned about and we pay attention to is not just the graduation rate, because it really does bait the question. And the superintendent's always pushing me on this, where, Joe, we're glad, good, good on the graduation rate, but do they have the skills necessary for them to be, to succeed when they go out into the real world? And that's basically what we're trying to make sure happens in our system. So, thank you for the time to share that information.
Sorry, I didn't introduce myself earlier. So, I'm Barbara Adamus. I'm the Deputy Superintendent Acting for Educational Support and Community Learning. And so, the last point that we were asked to present is on maintaining safe learning environments. So, I want to commend the administrators who are here, our staff, our teachers, to include our counselors, librarians. It really takes the whole school community to ensure that our students are safe. It's constant supervision, visibility of administrators in the hallways, enforcing the board policies and the SOPs that guide proper student behavior and the consequences of misbehavior. And if things are not going right with a student, you know, instead of being so quick to suspend, we're guided by our Student Conduct Procedural Manual, where we have interventions in place. And what seems to be working is when we bring in parents and students and address the misbehavior, and also interventions that are needed, not only in the school setting and in the classrooms, but things that we would expect the parents to discuss with their children at home as well. And then, having mediation sessions, you know, because that's, that's what we try to do in our, our in our, our interventions, especially when it comes to allegations of, of harassment, intimidation and bullying. We want to bring in the students who are involved and, and try to mediate and ensure that students feel safe when they are on their campuses. Another area when it comes to ensuring that we have a safe learning environment is filling those vacancies. So not only are we dealing with turnover rates with retirees, with resignations, but we also have employees who are promoting in-house. A school aide, a par educator, for example, could be promoted to a regular school aide and that is more job stability, or they could be promoted within the district in any of the positions or, or they can be an administrative officer or what have you. So we do our best to fill the vacancies in the school level as quickly as we can. And then we're also looking at our SRO program. It's actually GPD's program that was implemented in our high schools. It started approximately in January of this year. So in our six high schools, we had, we actually have an SRO on campus, not necessarily to look out for those students who are, are misbehaving, but taking advantage of every learning and teaching opportunity with students to talk to them about why the, the SRO is on our campus, to help, to help out the administrators and the school aides in enforcing school policies. And then if, if we need a teachable moment for our students in the classrooms, the SROs avail themselves. So we have our Student Support Services Division, our administrator, Chris Anderson, who has been working extensively with our chief of police and Lieutenant Paulino, who is overseeing the SROs. Thank you.
I am Dr. Leibeth Nahalawa. I'm the newest kid on the block and I am the deputy for assessment and accountability. And we're so glad that we're here tonight to listen and answer your questions. And this is really a good idea to, for us to have a dialogue. And we can, you can tell us what you, what you have in mind and maybe we can answer your questions. And this is a good way to listen to your concerns regarding your Guam Department of Education. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and we're here. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you. So thank you, GDU, for the information that you just shared. We'll now take like a five-minute break. So you get water if someone needs a bathroom. There's some food here provided by the GW team. So if you want to grab some food and then we'll come back in five minutes. Thank you.
So I'm Barbara Adamus. I'm the deputy superintendent acting for educational support and community learning. And so the last point that we were asked to present is on maintaining safe learning environments. So I want to commend the administrators who are here, our staff, our teachers, to include our counselors, librarians. It really takes the whole school community to ensure that our students are safe. It's constant supervision, visibility of administrators in the hallways, enforcing the board policies and the SOPs that guide proper student behavior and the consequences of misbehavior. And if things are not going right with the student, you know, instead of being so quick to suspend, we're guided by our student conduct procedural manual where we have interventions in place. And what, what seems to be working is when we bring in parents and students and, and address the, the misbehavior and also interventions that are needed, not only in the, the school setting and in the classrooms, but things that we would expect the parents to discuss with their children at home as well. And then having mediation sessions, you know, because that's, that's what we try to do in our, our interventions, especially when it comes to allegations of, of harassment, intimidation and bullying. We want to bring in the students who are involved and, and try to mediate and ensure that students feel safe when they are on their campuses. Another area when it comes to ensuring that we have a safe learning environment is filling those vacancies. So not only are we dealing with turnover rates with retirees, with resignations, but we also have employees who are promoting in-house. A school aide, a parent educator, for example, could be promoted to a regular school aide and that is more job stability, or they could be promoted within the district in any of the positions or, or they can be an administrative officer or what have you. So we do our best to fill the vacancies in the school level as quickly as we can. And then we're also looking at our SRO program. It's actually GPD's program that was implemented in our high schools. It started approximately in January of this year. So in our six high schools, we had, we actually have an SRO on campus, not necessarily to look out for those students who are, are misbehaving, but taking advantage of every learning and teaching opportunity with students to talk to them about why the, the SRO is on our campus, to help, to help out the administrators and the school aides in enforcing school policies. And then if, if we need a teachable moment for our students in the classrooms, the SROs avail themselves. So we have our Student Support Services Division, our administrator, Chris Anderson, who has been working extensively with our chief of police and Lieutenant Paulino, who is overseeing the SROs. Thank you.
I am Dr. Leibeth Nahalawa. I'm the newest kid on the block and I am the deputy for assessment and accountability. And we're so glad that we're here tonight to listen and answer your questions. And this is really a good idea to, for us to have a dialogue. And we can, you can tell us what you, what you have in mind and maybe we can answer your questions. And this is a good way to listen to your concerns regarding your Guam Department of Education. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and we're here. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you. So thank you, GDU, for the information that you just shared. We'll now take like a five-minute break. So you get water if someone needs a bathroom. There's some food here provided by the GW team. So if you want to grab some food and then we'll come back in five minutes. Thank you.
So I just, I just want to let the gentleman know that we do have our special education folks here. And we do, I am aware of the issue regarding the interpreters that was brought to my attention yesterday. And we're definitely looking into that, both a short-term solution as well as a potential long-term solution to this.
Thank you. Mr. Attit.
I had not intended to talk, but after hearing the gentleman who graduated here in GW in 2004.
Four.
Four. The topic I'm going to talk about is nothing new. It's nothing new to the board. It's nothing new to Senator Borha. It's nothing new to Senator Chris, I was going to say Chris Barry, Chris Bynett. Let me tell you what, I got a call this morning, morning, normally it would have been done in No one? No? Any takers? No one? I mean, I guess our God was there. We had to give him too much information. We scared him.
Howdy, everybody. Good evening. My name is Caleb. Let me just move. Okay, I'm gonna stand here. So it's down here. Okay, hello, everybody. Welcome. My name is Caleb. My sign name, as I take a letter C and I put it near my chin. My school is Career Tech. I am with, I am a deaf student within Career Tech. And I also have a deaf teacher. I also have interpreters with us too, tonight and at school. So I'm here, I want to get more support and find a way so I could have more interpreters for our deaf students, or deaf people to communicate, which is really important for us. So some of our deaf people, you know, they struggle writing English back and forth, and some of them don't understand. So it's better that deaf people have clear signs if they use that for communication. So it's really important that we have interpreters because of the ADA law. Please help support for more interpreters. And we encourage more interpreters to, you know, for our schools so that we can train them, whether we need it for doctors outside of school. And if we have deaf people, you know, and they need appointments, we want to make sure they have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Any comments?
Hi, my name is Kevin. I graduated from GW in 2004. It's a long time, right? When I was in school, I didn't have support. I'm actually, I call myself deaf. I'm deaf. But I had no interpreters. I struggled. I really struggled. My question to you guys is, I heard from so many senators in the past, and my mom really fought for me. I did not get support at all. None. I fought my way through elementary, middle, and high school without an interpreter, without hearing aids. I had to learn to read lips. Really, I learned to read lips since I was in elementary school. My question to you is, you keep saying you will do this, you will do that, you will get funding. But you guys, the past legislature failed me and my mom, and many other deaf students. Now you guys are new senators. What difference, from the past, what difference can you make for us in terms of school? Do you actually know, do you actually know how many disability kids you have in school right now in the survey? There's nothing mentioned about it. I looked it up. Do you know how many teachers are certified in special education that we have now? Do you guys know? I'm asking. No. And that hurts me. That hurts so many kids with disabilities. You had more than 20 years, GAWB, I mean, the Board of Education, you had more than 20 years to fix this problem. I'm living proof. So my, I can't explain what I'm feeling right now, really, but I want to see a difference. I really do. There's so many public education students that are dropping out. It's not in the survey probably, but they are dropping out to go to charter school. They get better services now. Public school needs to actually work and collaborate with many people with disabilities to improve the services. And that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Do you guys want to comment on services? Did you guys want to, in regards to, I mean, what are the services are now?
So I just, I just want to let the gentleman know that we do have our special education folks here. And we do, I am aware of the issue regarding the interpreters. That was brought to my attention yesterday. And we're definitely looking into that, both a short-term solution as well as a potential long-term solution to this.
Thank you. Mr. Attit.
I had not intend to talk, but after hearing the gentleman who graduated here in GW in 2004. The topic I'm going to talk about is nothing new. It's nothing new to the board. It's nothing new to Senator Borja. It's nothing new to Senator Chris, I was going to say Chris Barry. Chris Barnett. Let me tell you what, I got a call this morning. Morning, normally would have been done in an afternoon. There's, I'm not going to name the school. There's a fifth grade class that the kid, this is how he does it. No aide. No aide. Poor kid. Senator, Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Adamos, I don't know who else up there. But there are more kids out there right now in our public school system who are needing special education treatment. We hear in Washington that they're starting to cut, 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 cut. I'm going to turn around and ask the senators. This fellow that went to school in 2000, graduated in 2004, explained it very, very well. He never got an assistance. I'm asking you, Senator Borja, if the federal government won't give, let the government of Guam take care of our children. We have to give, we cannot sit back and say, well, the federal government is not going to help us. If they cannot help us, we have an obligation. As senators and as parents, I've got to take care of my children. And if I have to do it in the ballot, I would do it. But please, please, why do people, you know, the people that are working at special ed, as one-to-one, believe me, they love their job. They love it. Why? They're helping a child. But why do they have to quit? Because number one, no school, no pay. The kid doesn't come, I don't know whether, if the kid doesn't come, whether he's going to get paid. No annual, no sick leave. Ladies and gentlemen, we all know that if I am working, I want to be able to provide my family security, at least for health insurance. And if they can't get it, I'm sorry, I love my kids, but I have to turn and look for another job. Senators, that's exactly the reason why people are leaving the position of one-to-one aide. So here this afternoon evening, in front of all of you, and I'm appealing to you senators, look at that gentleman over there, who in 2004 said he never got help. Son, my apology, I was in the board at that time and up to now. I will take equal fault for that. And please accept my apology. I will not be quiet anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Attit. And to answer the question for the young man here, and also Mr. Attit, in regards to SED, at least from the legislature and the Committee on Education, I have met with Mr. Attit in regards to therapists, from speech therapy to physical therapy, and even psychologists across the department. And so we're working with, you know, we've had meetings with the central in regards to some of these things. And so those are the things that we're working and paying attention to, especially with the, the federal funds as well, some of it being in jeopardy. And so that is one of our priorities as part of going into the, the new budget discussions for the upcoming fiscal year. So it is something that we will continue to evaluate and work with the board and Department of Education to address. And so thank you for you guys' input.
I wanted to address the concern of Mr. Kevin. I truly appreciate, on behalf of the 38th legislature, I truly appreciate your concern, sir, but I would, it's something that I didn't want to bring it up yet, but we, there is a collaboration that has been happening in, within my office and former Senator Will Castro. Now, we've sat down many times over, I am the oversight for disability services, so I take on this responsibility seriously. Now, I'm in to this position as a senator for three months now, but I would like to let everybody know here that I have had coordinations with regards to this particular issue. So the good old, former Senator Will Castro and myself, my office is devising a project, actually a community outreach project that we started coordinating with, and this will be addressed, I just want to assure you. So Kevin, I would personally like to coordinate with you and invite you, and you could be the person to guide our, my office along with this project that we're doing for, for this particular concern. I will exchange numbers with you, and I would like to bring you on board and sit down with us so at least you can guide us, because this is, this is issue that I will not let pass. And along with my colleagues here, trust that we will address it. You have my word. So on that note, I don't want to, you know, unravel the whole plan yet because it's still half-baked, but there will be something, and it's a really, really good thing to address this issue. That's all I'm going to say for now. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Senator Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to comment. I first just want to commend Career Tech because they do have a really great Deaf Academy program down in Hoggett. Career Tech's a charter school, and again, I commend them for that. But students are going to this program down at Career Tech because these services simply aren't available in our public school system. And we raise these concerns. I know that Deputy Sanchez had said he was only aware of the issue with the lack of interpreters in GDOE, but we raised this issue. Two years ago, we had a very big hearing on special education, and we had a lot of deaf students who came and they, they shared their, their issues and the challenges that they faced in the public school system. And it's been my experience that we're not going to see positive changes for our students unless the legislature and the management of the Guam Department of Education hold special education accountable. It's really just as simple as that. When we had these hearings and even up to now, I still get complaints and concerns from parents about IEPs, about a lack of one-to-one aides. And we've tried to address this at the legislative level for the past two years. I worked very closely with Superintendent Swanson to move money around so that we can keep these aides employed through the summer, because that is part of the issue, is we don't make it attractive enough for these aides to do this very meaningful work. And they do it out of the goodness of their heart, which isn't necessary, because we have a special education department that failed to spend $8 million that they had for one-to-one aides. So Mr. Kevin, I commend you for carving a life. You know, my mother was a deaf mute, and he graduated from high school in the 70s, and he didn't have the help either. And so he did the same thing that you did. He learned how to read lips, and we had our own way of signing with him. And, you know, even though the help wasn't there for him, I think I see a lot of that in you, and that you have to be a tremendous and courageous individual to really carve a life where you don't get the help that you need from the people who are supposed to give it. So just in closing, again, it really comes down to holding special education accountable. We've had many hearings at the legislature with special ed, and in each and every one, there's been this almost confrontational, excuse me, tone where we're trying to bring these concerns from the parents, and you just have the leadership of special education just trying to contra and, and fight these very real invalid concerns which are happening in our schools every single day. And so for me, it's just about really holding SED accountable, and I hope that we see more of that. Sisus Masih, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michelle Camacho. I'm from the Division of Special Education. I just wanted to address the need for interpreters. We do recognize the need. There has been a longstanding request to fill. There's, you know, we can't force people to apply for these jobs, but there has been educational interpreters, positions available. We've also, all of our educational interpreters, which is what our deaf interpreters are called, are all at Career Tech Academy, providing services to our students there. In regards to one-to-one aides, we do recognize the shortage. We are working with our HR division to hire more aides as we speak. And we are also working with our HR department to change the position of one-to-one aides to what's called the developmental disability aid, which is a little different. It's specific to students, working with students with disabilities. And we hope that that helps us prevent the large turnover rate that we have. But our aides are full-time. They do work in the summer. They do work when there are no students. So they do provide services to not just students, but they help at the schools to address need at the school for students with disabilities.
Good evening. I just would like to add on to what Michelle stated about the one-to-one aides. I just want to commend all our, our staff who are out there at the schools because they really, really work hard. And you probably don't understand what they go through at the schools because you're not actually there 24/7 with them. And it breaks my heart that they have to go through that, and sometimes they have to do a three, one, three-to-one, one-to-three, whatever you may call it. But we support them, and sometimes they get really tired, and, but we love the kids that, that are with us. So I just wanted to kind of suggest to maybe spend some time at the schools. I mean, don't just come in, pop in and say hi, bye, but come in there and just see actually what our, our staff, our one-to-ones, what they go through on a day-to-day basis. Because you will never understand it unless you are there. So that's all I have to say. I just really, I, I just want to give a hands up to all the, the staff members who are working out there at the school, even, even administrators. We are all janitors. We try to fix things up. We are one-to-ones. We're everything out there. We work hard. So I just wanted to say that because students, we really love our students out there. And when they don't get serviced, it hurts our, it really hurts us. But we can't do much because it all trickles down from the top to the schools, and that's where it hurts the most, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize my vice chair for the Committee on Education, who just joined us, Senator Tina Munya Barnes. Thank you for coming. If you want to give a few remarks.
Yes, Sisus Masih, Mr. Chair, and I do apologize for my lateness. I was at another function that I couldn't, that I had to be at. But in the efforts of the previous speaker that just spoke, I want to extend my undunklen of Sisus Masih, because we do realize, I personally realize, what you as teachers, what you as one-to-ones, what you as, as special education do to help the students. And I just want to say, I will take responsibility. If there is a disconnect from the administrative perspective, to the school perspective, to the student perspective, to the gentleman who asked that question, let's come together and see what we can do to reconnect everybody together. Everybody's trying to work hard, and everybody does do good for what they have, and the shortages are there, and I'm not going to deny that. Everything that's coming down, we sometimes have to adapt, improvise, and overcome, and we can't keep blaming each other and saying, no, they didn't do their part. If there is a disconnect, if we are having concerns, if we really need to revisit the policy, then bring it to our attention, but let's work together. Because we are all trying here, and if we can continue to see what we can do to help out, because yes, everybody at DOE literally tries their very best. And if, if the administrators need to be held accountable, then, then at least give the attention our way. The Policy Board, I mean, the Educational Board is here. We have given the, the perspective of leadership from the administration to the board, to the administration, back to the board. So again, so I want to say that as being the vice chair and seeing what the concerns are out there, I don't want to put blame on anybody. I want to take responsibility and saying, let me help connect the dots. Let me help connect the, and facilitate what needs to be done if it cannot be done through the process, because I know there's a lot of frustration out there. But I also know that there's a lot of you guys who work your dangest to, darnedest to, to do good. My daughter was a one-to-one aide, she's no longer there. She worked in the system for nine years, and she has shared a lot of the frustrations. But she said, Mom, unless you can provide the resources, it's not going to change. But I said, I think if we can work together and see what we could fit first in, in as far as if we need the teachers, if we need the specialists, if we need to revisit the one-to-one ed position and change it to a developmental disability position so that we can probably get more resources for that position, then, then that's something that we can do as policy. So I think it's important to say, let's not put blame on anybody. Let's see what we can do to work together. And that's why these town hall meetings were initiated, to see what we can hear from you and go back to the table that we're in to see what policy we can do to make it easier for you. And I know the challenges are going to be even more harder, but I know, and I have to say, help us adapt and improvise to the situations that's happening now, that's unprecedented, that's going to come down, and let us look for resources together. Because if we keep beating each other up and putting blame on one section over the another, we're never going to get anywhere. I stand here to say, whatever you need to give my way, our way, I'm willing to listen and take on the challenge or the issues with you so I can help facilitate. That's what I want to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnes.
I mentioned earlier about the annual State of Public Education Report, which is available in the GDOE website. On page 28, I have tables upon tables of different categories of employees that we have, and on table 27, for school year 23, 24, entitled Allied Health Professionals. Compared with the prior year, the total number of allied health professionals that we had in school year 22 to 23 was only 20. The next year, it rose to 42. The types of allied health professions that are listed in this table are audiologists, audiometrists, physical therapies, psychologists, social workers, speech-language clinicians, speech-language pathologists. The greatest increase was among our social workers. There was a decrease in our speech-language pathologies, and I investigated on the decreases. Some resigned, some retired, some went on to greener pastures. And for these kinds of positions, it is very hard to recruit. We all know that we have a limited number of special skilled We all know that we have a limited number of special skilled people on the island, and I look at our job announcements, they're always there. In other words, we are not getting applicants. The department listened to the kind of support, and that's why that is actually needed, because if you're talking about audiometrists, speech-language clinicians, these are people that do assessments of your disability. They're not necessarily the intervention people. This is why the department increased the number of social workers 25, as opposed to zero the prior year. So in the upcoming annual State of Public Education report, I will track the same number of categories of employees. Of course, I have here registered nurses, community health nursing administrator, licensed practical nurse, teachers that have master educator, master equivalency, professional educator, temporary educator, initial counselor. All of these are reported in our annual State of Public Education report. To our dear senators, if you need more information, this is provided, and I will give you a copy right now of the annual State of Public Education report, which the superintendent submits to the chairperson of, no, to the speaker. Every October 30, you receive something like this. Whether it was distributed to the rest of the senators, I do not know, but we make it available online. So I have brought extra copies. There are a lot more information that you can get from this report. Thank you.
Thank you.[1680.32][1680.32](APPLAUSE) Okay. As we come to the close of tonight's town hall, I want to take this time to thank each and every one of you who took the time to, to be here and engage in this important conversation. Your commitment to our schools and our students is what drives us to keep moving forward Tonight was not just about identifying the problems, we're here to be a part of the solution, and that begins by showing up, us listening, and by working together. Thank you again to the George Washington High School community for hosting us, to my colleagues, Senator Campbell, Senator Barnett, and vice chair Tina Munya Barnes. Thank you, the Board of Education, GDOE staff, the Miers, the Miers, school representative, and everyone who has helped us make this town hall possible. Let's continue to stand together with open minds and share commitment to the future education on Guam. If you have any additional comments, questions, or concerns, please feel free to contact my office at contact@senatorvinceborja.com or 671-969-8423. The time is now 7:44. Thank you and have a great evening. We've now adjourned.[1787.25][1787.25](APPLAUSE)